Good evening.
I have Scott.
And welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach, held Tuesday, June 19, 2018 at 7:00 p.m. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Bendel.
Present.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yeah.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Vice President Diamond.
Here.
President Oramo is absent. Let the record indicate the presence of Corporation Council Robert Agostisi will now have a salute to the flag.
Actually, tomorrow is our Commissioner of DPW's birthday, so I'm going to ask him to lead us in the pledge.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just before we begin tonight's meeting, as you can see, the Police Commissioner and Acting City Manager is not here with us. As many of you know, our resources are focused on a search and rescue of a young child who is missing, and I just want to take a moment that our thoughts and prayers should stay with his family, as well as the first responders, our lifeguards, firefighters, and police personnel. So we'll save the City Manager's update until potentially the end of the meeting.
Okay, so, the first item this evening is for a public hearing for an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding garbage and refuse.
I could declare the meeting open. The City Manager isn't here to give the detail of the item. Item number one, sanitation charges for the collection of garbage imposed on residential properties. A, the owner and owners of every parcel of real property in the city in which one or more residential units is or are located shall pay to the city annually the advanced one-half on July 1 of each year, beginning July 1, 2018, and one-half on July 1 of each year, beginning on January 1, 2019, sanitation charges in the amount of $605 for each residential unit contained in such parcel of property for the collection of garbage, paper, refuse from said premises. Are there any comments from the Council?
Yeah, just to summarize that, it's raising the garbage collection fees $20 a year. That's what this is.
Are there any other comments? Any comments from the public on the hearing? Seeing no further hands, I'll close the hearing. Next item.
Okay. Our second item is a public hearing for an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding special events.
Thank you. Since the Acting City Manager isn't here, I'm going to ask Corporation Council to just give a little summary of the ordinance that's proposed. And just for clarification purposes, this is only on for a hearing. We haven't noticed the vote on the item. The purpose of this hearing is to hear your comments, your proposals, and thoughts on the item, and then we'll deal with it and take those comments back and decide how to proceed with the item.
Sure. So, to summarize the item, we obviously have a jewel of a resource here in the city, and everybody who comes down here and wants to have events here, predominantly in the summer, but really all year round, knows it and avails themselves of that through a very generous policy that the city has afforded in years past with respect to the issuance of special permits. What this proposed legislation accomplishes is it forces permit apppliers to basically compensate the city for the anticipated cost of the event in advance of the event from now on. In cases where the city overbills, the applicant will get a reimbursement after the event. In cases where the city underbills, the applicant will receive an invoice. And that's more or less the summary.
Okay. Any comments from the Council?
I just want to clarify, so this is on tonight solely for the hearing purpose. There will be no vote.
That's correct.
Correct.
Comments from the public?
My name is Dennis Clark, and I'm a member of the AOH for about 25, 30 years. I live at East Atlantic Beach. I have a business in Long Beach in the West End, accounting, financial planning practice.
Dana.
Is that better?
Yes.
Everybody? Okay. And I'm here tonight to speak about these fees that the city wants to impose upon our organization. The organization is a not-for-profit organization, and every year when the parade is run, which is, if they could see that, the 29th or 30th year, the monies that are collected from restaurants, from vendors, net of fees that we pay out for porters' bands and things like that, usually $15,000 to $20,000 of that money has been given to Long Beach every year towards that event, and the remaining money that's left is somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000 bucks. That money is given to charity. It's donated to scholarships, it's donated to the school. No one in the organization receives any salary, no one receives any benefit whatsoever. The prices that are being mentioned for the costs of policing that event in the fall would basically be far more than could be afforded. It would probably do the same thing to the Michelle O'Neill Foundation, to the Polar Bear Foundation. These are all charitable events. No one makes any money. Everything is donated. If they had to pay for these events, they probably wouldn't have these events anymore. And I think that's part of the culture of our city and our heritage, all of these events. And to cancel them all because no one has the money to pay for them, I think it'd be really a disgrace for the city, which has this culture for so many years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Ms. Blanchett.
I don't have the thing in front of me because there weren't enough printed. $250 is what the permit fee is going up to, correct?
That is the permit fee, for a special permit.
For a special permit. And it is currently $100, correct?
$120.
It's $120?
Yeah.
It went up again?
That's what's in the code now.
Oh, wow, okay, because I remember, I think the first Lemonade Pedal we threw was only $75, and it went up to $100. So I really am not okay with this at all. As you all know, I run the only public education event thing for bicycle and pedestrian safety called the Lemonade Pedal, and I do this voluntarily. We do not have money for this. Like, as it is, that $100 whatever dollars is a lot, but to raise it to $250, I am moving the Lemonade Pedal outside of Long Beach this year because I cannot afford that fee. I mean, the other choice is to start charging people so I can, you know, do kind of your job, like educating people on, because we don't have any kind of education for bicycles here. So I think that this fee is really unfair for nonprofits who aren't, you know, the person who just spoke, they do a great thing raising money, like for benefits and stuff, but then there's also smaller nonprofits such as mine, who has, I have no staff, I have no funding, and I'm just trying to provide a service to the city that you don't already, like that you aren't providing, so this is extremely unfair. And for a nonprofit to have to pay $250 just to file a piece of paper, that's all this is. This is a piece of paper. This is somebody already getting paid, whether it's $100 or $250. It's not fair that I and other nonprofits are expected to pay the same amount as organizations that are coming here to make money, holding events. So it's really, really unfair that there's no kind of like sliding or anything, sliding fee type of thing. So I really would like you to just, $250 is crazy. New York City, the permit fees are $25, and you only need 30 days in advance notice to file the paperwork. Town of Hempstead, it's $10, and you only need, I believe it's 30 days as well. Long Beach, $250 and 45 days' notice? You're basically telling small nonprofits and small community organizations, I'm thinking of our civics as well, I'm thinking about maybe a Girl Scout troop wants to hold an event. You're telling them it's going to cost $250 to file a piece of paper? That's not what Long Beach is about. Like, the specialness of the city is that we have great vibrant community events, right? Isn't that why we love it here? And so this is just kind of, it seems like a revenue type of generator, and this isn't where you should be looking for money.
Thank you.
So, Allison, you know, your point is very well taken, as always. I just wanted to try to explain what that fee is based on. It's a processing fee that's designed to reflect the cost of the research, the internal research and analysis that goes on in connection with every single one of the events that we have in this city. And I, well, hang on, hang on a second. So, I mean, I'm just trying to explain what the rationale is, that's all. And you're free to disagree with the fee. However, I could tell you, and the City Clerk can attest to this, you have no idea how much is devoted to planning these things internally, and there's frankly, just wait, there's an opportunity cost associated with that. And this is frankly a paltry amount to collect in connection with those, with that, you know, expenditure of time and resources that goes into the planning of these events. And not just, you know, one event, but, I mean, we saw this especially with Pride last year. I mean, I can't begin to tell you the amount that went into, of time and resources that went into the processing of that permit.
And I appreciate that.
So that's just, I just wanted to explain, I'm just trying to explain the rationale, but I don't mean to be confrontational.
And I appreciate that, what goes into Pride and events, whether it's the Michelle O'Neill or the, or other things, those are big massive planning things. You are putting that in the same basket as something, for example, as the Lemonade Pedal, something that I've thrown every year, and I do head to toe. There is nothing the city needs to do for it.
I'm, again, not getting into it.
So there needs to be...
Not trying to argue.
Right, right, right. And I appreciate what you're saying, but I would recommend the Council really look at this and see if there's different levels perhaps. Maybe partner more with organizations who, such as mine, who shouldn't have to pay like this much to provide a service. Thank you.
Sir?
Pete Myers, 716 West Olive Street. I'm here to talk about the Long Beach Polar Bears, and also support, of course, the AOH and Michelle O'Neill. Michelle O'Neill is probably my most favorite day of the year, and the AOH has been a big supporter of the Long Beach Polar Bears as well. We're not, us, the Polar Bears, the Bradley family, the Myers, and all the other volunteers that volunteered for the Polar Bears, you know, we raised money for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. We've raised over $6 million for the Make-A-Wish Foundation, and we granted hundreds of wishes. And it's really because of everything, you know, you all helped us out, and the lifeguards, you know, God bless them, you know, volunteer for us, and the police departments there, and beach maintenance, and, you know, the CSA. So we do understand that there's a cost to our event, but we do feel that, you know, there's probably 100,000 items out there between sweatshirts, t-shirts, magnets, you know, that say "Long Beach" on them, and that there's a price to goodwill that you can't really calculate, that, you know, we're bringing in probably, I mean, the police estimate that on Super Bowl Sunday, February, a real quiet time in a beach community, that we're bringing 20,000 people here, if not more. You know, that means people coming in that are spending money in the restaurants, they're spending money in the bars, they're, you know, going to Branch Gino's, they're, you know, filling up their gas tanks. There's a real benefit to having our event here. And, you know, I think at the last City Council, the budget meeting, you know, was brought up that, you know, we'll charge the Polar Bears X amount of dollars, I believe the figure was $50,000. And, you know, you might say, hey, wow, well, you guys raised $6 million. What's $50,000 each year? But to us, that's five wishes, you know, that were, I'm sorry, it's 10 wishes that we're granting, you know, and that's kids with life-threatening injuries. So I did see Mike tag me on the boardwalk, I believe it was last Friday, and we did speak, and he did say, you know, $50,000 is not what we're even talking about, and it was much, much lower, what he said. But we're really reaching out to you, because this whole event was really a community event. It was all of you, it was all of us, it's almost everyone in this room, but I think supports it because it's, because of the goodwill that it brings to our city. So we really hope that, you know, when you go back and you talk about this, that really, that the goodwill is priceless, and it's what makes this town one of the most dynamic and, I'm getting buzzed, but, but really, there's a reason why we all love living here, and it's because of these community events. So thank you.
Mary Folesavich, Northeast Bay Canal Civic. The civics do a lot of good things in this town. The AOH, I've seen them give scholarships. I've also seen them give scholarships to children who've lost a parent in 9/11 or related tragedy. I've seen the Polar Bears step up. I've seen the civics step up and put the movies on for five years now, I think it is. I think you need to look at things on a sliding scale, and I think you need to look at what the money is being raised for. It's not being raised for them to go out and have a party vote. I mean, they're helping children. They're helping children. They're helping kids go to college. I, you're, you just can't bundle everything together like you do, and you do it time and time again. You have to look at each thing. $250, did the pride parade, did they pay $250 each day for a permit? Or is it they're paying $250 for three days? These guys are going to pay the same $250 for one day? You're really not fair to organizations that do bring people in. They bring people in, they spend the money, people go to dinner, they go on the boardwalks, and you just, this is becoming the city of no and money. That's it.
I'm going to be the unpopular person here. I have great respect for every group that is here represented. However, you need to be able to pay your bills before you give to charity, and I'm speaking about the city's bill. We're in a fiscal crisis. It's great to give to charity, but you, this city needs to pay their bills, they're not doing that right now, and all these groups need to pay their bills. And I will say one thing about Irish Day and some of these other events, I don't go to them anymore because they're so crowded. Irish Day needs police presence because they let it get totally out of hand in past years. That thing about no open alcohol on the beach, on the, in the Irish Day should have been done 20 years ago. It gets really ugly when the sun goes down after Irish Day. So it's not all sweetness and light and charity. There's some problems that these events are causing for the city, and I just feel that Long Beach should be able to balance their books first, and maybe you could slim down these events, maybe you could prorate the permit fees, something like that, but I do feel police, sanitation, whatever goes into these events should be paid by the people who are holding them, and let them pull their, what is it called, their belts in like the city's pulling their belt in. Thank you.
Good evening all, Dean of Fury, Long Beach, New York. I'd like to say that these events embody the residents of Long Beach who do way more than the outsiders that we bring into Long Beach. Whether it be LBGT, whether it be events as craft fairs, et cetera, we cater to those events. We cater them to the way in such, you have an application for use of alcohol. We have not been able to manage this process on the boardwalk on the beach, but you have been able to not allow those concessions on the boardwalk to serve alcohol. The events that you give permits to are selling, are serving under their permit, under their licenses that they get, their temporary licenses, supposed to be beer, wine, and soda, cider. They're serving liquor. Where we had set up the concessions came to the, came here with plans in place to monitor the alcohol usage. So there's a double standard going on here. Whether it's any event, we do more for people who come into this town to use our space, our beaches, our boardwalks than we do for the business owners. I suggest before you're making changes to your permit fees, all these, all these organizations here who do raise money for local charities, for local kids, and for, and to support the community at large, we should think about maybe putting together a committee of factions or people from each one of these groups and decide what's fair and equitable for everybody, for the city and for them. But we have to stop catering to all the outsiders and start worrying about what's happening here first. And I think you should revisit your policy as opposed to the concessions on the, I'm not here on their behalf, I want to be clear about that, but if you're going to allow them, these people to take temporary permits to serve alcohol on our Ocean Beach Park, then we should allow our concessions to apply for the permits to sell alcohol in their concessions. You can't be a double standard here, and we need to make sure that you're getting together with the residents and people from each one of these groups and figure out a way to make everybody happy.
I just asked that you continue to leave this hearing open, to continue it, because I believe, I requested some labor costs and information, which I believe you probably as well want to know the cost of each event, how to better manage the payroll, if it can be done. I'm sure that if there are volunteers needed and would want to assist, there are people out there. I know high school children would like to get community service, so that's an option. That's all. I'm just asking you to leave this open. I did receive a call at 5 o'clock today for the information that I foiled as far as the labor costs, and was told that they're still putting it together, and that I will be getting it, just so you know, and I think it's only fair to leave it open. Thank you.
Just, just for clarification purposes, when we, we were planning to leave it open anyway, which is one of the reasons we'll continue the hearing at the next meeting on the 3rd, and then we'll probably vote on it then. No problem.
Hello.
I can see you. You can come next.
I'm sorry, what?
No, she thinks I can't see her, but I do.
I'm sorry.
Okay. No, it's okay.
I want to talk to the piece of the propos...
Just state your name.
Judy Vining, talking from Long Beach aware. We're talking about section, the application for the use of alcohol, and one of the things I kind of wanted to ask you is it says the granting or denial of that permit, is that the discretion of the City Clerk? Do you have criteria that are involved in what would, you know, specific criteria, what would cause you to accept or deny, you know, written criteria? Are you planning to have that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's left up to the clerk, but obviously the clerk works very closely with the City Manager and everyone else in the city, my office in particular, to make sure that those concerns are addressed. And, I mean, really, the best example I could give you is the one from Pride, where we set out, how many parameters are listed in, I mean, it's just counts, and they're all safety-based.
I'm sure you did, and I'm really just here to say that you don't really need to reinvent the wheel. There are community after community organizations such as the CDC, NIA, AAA, all have guidelines, very specific guidelines for managing alcohol at community events, which are very different, okay, than a day-to-day operation of a restaurant or a concession or a bar. These are one-time events, but one of the things that we are always concerned about is, of course, youth exposure. The guidelines put out by all of these organizations, I'm happy to share with you, but they're logical. Confined area. Any alcohol that's served is served in a different, in a clear cup, so it's visible as opposed to other drinks. No more than one drink at a time. Check for ID. I could go on and on. And no one allowed in or out, and stop service at least one hour, if not two, before the event ends, you know, in addition to all the liability and other things that you would be concerned about.
That's a great point, and I think you'd be surprised if you saw, for instance, the Pride permit, it factors in those subtleties that you just mentioned.
Okay, but I'm suggesting that if you...
Uniform criteria. I get it.
To do this, not just about the criteria, you set the parameters for how it's done, because it would be very different for, let's say, a parade, where you might set an area that's okay for, you know, people to have alcohol, but it's a very controlled area. I'm not just saying the Irish Day Parade, any parade. Whereas a volleyball tournament, the guidelines are still the same from all these major organizations that have studied it. You keep it separate. So, you know, that might be some of the give and take that has to be on the part of the organizations as well. At any rate, I'm here to offer our services. We are the experts in this, you know, there is no doubt, and we're happy to share with you what we know. That's our role.
Thank you.
So, just wanted to direct the question to our corporate counsel. Is it possible to make some of the criteria available on our website, just in a spirit of transparency, so that the community groups are aware of the fact that we have certain regulations, and that obviously the community can be aware of what those regulations are?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Carol O'Neill. I live at 26...
Can you just lift the microphone up, Carol? Can you just speak into the microphone?
Hello?
Thank you.
My name is Carol O'Neill. I represent the Michelle O'Neill Foundation to benefit children with cancer and special needs. I live at 26 Oregon Street here in Long Beach since 1972. First, I just want to say thank you for the cooperation that we have received over the past 21 years, holding our volleyball tournament here in Long Beach. We are coming up to our 22nd, hopefully on September 8. We have a myriad of volunteers. I think we have organized our event in a way that it makes it the best it can be for the city and for the people in attendance. I understand that there are going to be some fees imposed. I don't know what they are. We've always paid a permit fee. We've always paid for security the night before and the night of, and we've enjoyed holding the event here. I understand that people, as Pete Myers mentioned, consider it the, you know, the best day of the summer. I love to hear that, because I love this city. My daughter Michelle was a West End chick. I really hope that we continue to hold our event in the West End. And speaking of goodwill, I think it really needs to be considered that so many people that attend the volleyball tournament speak very highly of it, they want to keep returning to it, and then they are here in our city to enjoy what the city has to offer. I really was not prepared to say anything, but I'm glad you did give me the opportunity, and I thank you again for the cooperation that we have received. and I thank you again for the cooperation that we have received. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brendan Healy, 68, New Hampshire Street, in the West End, member of the West End Civic Association, and just had a couple of quick clarifying questions. First one is, I've heard a lot about these organizations, obviously they do great work, they do a lot of charity work, also do bring in people to the city. Has the Office of Economic Development done any feasibility study on what would happen if these organizations choose not to host these events in the coming year due to this application?
Yeah, just finish your comments, we'll respond at the end.
Okay, sorry, another minute or two. So the next part of that is, if they haven't done it, and again, there's been a lot of work put into this, for sure, but they really should consider looking at what would happen. So as Mike pointed out from West Home as well, you may want to consider keeping this open till more information can be provided.
We've, we've decided to keep, it's already been decided that we'll keep it open and continue to do the research on this as well.
But has, has Patty Bourne done an assessment?
I don't think that there's been an official feasibility, I mean, I think it's also at some point it is logical, if, if large-scale events don't take place, then there's obviously a significant impact, so it's, it's part of balancing when we propose doing this. But there has not been an official feasibility study that's been done.
Okay, well, take that into consideration, I hope it can be done, and hopefully that can be reported back.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Just two quick but open, Preston, West End, Long Beach. look at it, I can't understand that you've come up with this six or seven-page document without actually doing a feasibility study. How, how is eliminate paddle, pedal going to compare to a 10,000-people parade event? It's just not equal. So, and this is part, not the $250, but what it costs. And when you ask about having someone come to an official meeting as a consultant, does that mean when one of you or the police department come to a civic meeting, are we going to be charged that? Is that part of a special event? It's so vague and so complex that you really need to go back to the drawing board, because it's too confusing for the general public to understand at this point. For example, would a co-ed be charged for using the Magnolia Center for a meeting? Because the way I read it, it would be. That's a question.
Oh, I would just finish your, your comments, and we'll answer all your questions at the end. Was that the only question?
Well, if you answer the question, then I would follow up with another-
Okay, we'll answer them all after your comments.
Okay, so that would be, what is civic or a co-ed that has Scott come to a meeting or at the library, are we going to be charged for his services? That's the question. Okay, I'm done.
But that's your question. Okay. I don't, I, as far as I know, I don't think there was any contemplation, nor do I think the definitions provide, as they're listed here, provide that a council person should, and also it doesn't cost the city anything additional for a council person to come to a meeting.
But what about Scott, or the building department?
Hold on, I'm just finishing your, I'm, I'm answering your question. As far as I know, I think it was contemplated that these are additional costs that the city incurs, and the city doesn't incur anything when the, a city council member comes to a civic association. It's not, we don't generate overtime, we don't, with regard to the Magnolia Center, I think the definitions also provide for certain parts of-
Sure, and Ms. Preston, that would be consistent with the normal use, what you're proposing would be consistent with the normal use of the Magnolia Center, and wouldn't even qualify as a special event, nor would it come under the purview of this legislation as a result.
So when, at the library, that when somebody holds an event, like an East's Women Movement group, would that be considered a special event?
No, no, because it would-
Or if they met somewhere else other than the library, if they met at the MLK Center?
No, because I think, oh, you want to-
Yeah, no, I was gonna say, this is, this involves the use of streets, sidewalks, parks, or other city property.
But that's other city property?
The, the library's not-
No, but the MLK Center is-
But it's, I think the, the legislation isn't contemplate, if it's used for what it's generally used for, for example, a meeting at the MLK Center, the MLK Center is used for youth events all the time, so I don't believe that would be, and that, that was your example, I, I don't, or something at the, a meeting at the Magnolia Center.
I'm just trying to get clarification on this very lengthy document.
I don't believe that that was, that that's the intent of the legislation, but we'll certainly, in the next two weeks, go back and ensure that it's absolutely clear. But that was not the intent, if it's being used for what it is into contemplation. A street is not used for a fair generally, so that's something different, or a festival, or the boardwalk, or, I think that that's what's contemplated here, and if it requires some clarification, I think, well, that was the purpose of keeping the hearing open and not voting on it today.
Thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, just, Liz, just to add to that, for example, you just mentioned or referenced the library situation. The library events are not city, they're not city-related events. Also, the library events do not have an additional cost with respect to, let's say, sanitation, or the rec center being required to set something up, there are other hidden costs, and that's what this is about, and that's why we're having the conversation today with the residents. I think there are a lot of questions, and there are very, obviously valid concerns today, because based on the comments today, everyone in some way is giving back to the city, and so you're asking us now to make some decisions with respect to possibly a sliding scale, or possibly some way in which we can still work with all of the community groups. And so, again, just to echo what's being said here, we're just listening today, we're not voting on this today, but we're listening today, but we want you to understand that we have to present some legislation to you as a community. Once we have all of the feedback, then we can go on, we can possibly say, well, we can amend certain aspects of this, but it's important to first have some feedback from the community. So it's not set in stone today, because if you don't understand it, then how can we enforce it? So obviously, this is a part of the dialogue.
Would council be willing to have community input and have Pete or somebody from AOH?
Oh, can you use your microphone so they can hear you?
I already took my phone back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So would council be willing to have community input from Pete or from Carol, or from someone from AOH, or the Electric Light Parade?
Absolutely, I think that's, that's what the purpose of this hearing is.
Further than, beyond the hearing?
Well, we are having another hearing, we also have had a number of people email each of us, and I believe we've got, gone back to almost everyone. I think that that's, in the next two weeks, that is the opportunity, we're all accessible, and there's a, we're gonna have another hearing, because we're leaving it open. So if there's additional questions, or if there's a proposed amendment, they'll be made available, and there'll be another public meeting just like this for people to come and, and raise their concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, James Lynch. I'd like to follow up on what Mr. Healy spoke about with regards to speaking to economic development. I, as you know, I'm on a Chamber of Commerce, and I'm speaking here tonight, from my perspective, as, as the organizer for the Electric Light Parade, which is something that needs to be brought, and you need to understand it. I'm glad that you're not voting on this tonight, but with all due respect, Councilwoman Moore, if the people didn't come out tonight, as has been in the past, votes have been taken, and this would be very detrimental to all the groups that volunteered their time. My brothers here at the AOH, the O'Neil Foundation, the Polar Bears, volunteer all their time. So what I'd like to see come before, with this resolution, when it's adopted, because something has to be done, we know that, everybody has to do their fair share, but the city needs to look at it in an economic development, this is organic economic development that costs the city nothing but their labor. And when I say their labor, here's my issue, do we need to have every city employee at every event? This is something that needs to, you need to, the city needs to work with us and right-size these type of events. We don't need the entire police department, we don't need 19 specials on a boardwalk fair. The city needs to sit down and be able to say, okay, you know what, we'll work with you, and don't come to us the week before and say, this is what it is, or it's not happening. We need you to say, in the resolution, we'll start this four months out, so that we can negotiate this, and to see what works well for everybody, to see that it's actually feasible, because what, what's intended here, and if it's not, if it's not backed up by the people behind me, what's gonna happen is these events aren't gonna happen, and it's gonna be detrimental to the businesses. And that's a fact. We have a short opportunity. We've tried to create things, like the Electric Light Parade, which does well for the families, it creates a family atmosphere, and the businesses do well where they otherwise have never done before. But these are other events, the businesses have adapted to that and have, have, have learned how to make their business work around that, by doing brunches and so forth, so, they have a finite window to operate under, to make, to, to, to survive the winters, and this needs to be understood by the entire council, that we give away, we give away our beach to, to certain groups that get, that, that get, you know, they get grants. We don't do that, we do this on our own dime, and we need the help from the city. It can't be 100% turnaround, it's gonna cost this, and you have to pay it. The city has a certain responsibility to economic development. The tax, the, the businesses pay a 27% tax rate. That has to be looked at and understood, because if these things go away, and they will, some of them will, then that's not gonna help the city at all.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council, I'm just speaking as a resident, as you can tell by my dress today, but I've, I like to look, for example, to other municipalities in the United States, determine what they do with events, and a wonderful city, I think we can all agree, is the city of New Orleans. They've had a tremendous turnaround since Hurricane Katrina, that mirrors the turnaround that we've had since Superstorm Sandy, and their events permit process is absolutely fascinating. Anybody can have an event in the city of New Orleans. If, if corporation counselor like Stacey would like to go down to New Orleans and throw a parade for himself, he could do that. It's just a matter of, you fill out an application, you have a dialogue with the municipality, you tell them how many people you're expecting for your event, what you're trying to do with your event, if there's gonna be any need for sanitation at your event, and they simply send you a bill in advance of your event, and you pay it, and that's it. It's really a small permit fee as a result of all of the municipal services that you consume, whether it's police and sanitation or otherwise, and I really think the city of Long Beach would be well advised to look into that, rather than have the taxpayer subsidize events, and these are great events, these are wonderful events that we have in the city of Long Beach, but the taxpayer shouldn't be able, shouldn't be subsidizing them. We should be supporting organizations and having their events, but really the expenses are something that should be covered by the events themselves, whether they are for-profit, whether they are nonprofit, whether they are good and whether they're bad, we should apply it all equally. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Eileen Heschin, I just have a few comments. First, I think that you have figured out how much Pride cost, because they were gonna pay us back, so you know what the cost to the city was, you know what you were getting back and so forth, but I wonder if you've done that for the other events. So, a sliding scale, as Mary had suggested, is the best idea, because Allison Blanchett's thing doesn't cost as much as the Electric Light Parade, and that doesn't cost as much as Irish Day or these other things. So I really think you should put, you have to, look at the cost of all these things, whether it's police overtime, or garbage collection, or whatever it is, and then the benefit of it, but I don't know how you do that. How do you know how many extra slices of pizza Gino, Gino sold that day? But that's what has to be done, and what I fear is that it's gonna take a lot of expensive consultants to figure that out. So you figure that out, I guess, but I would also like to say that, I say this most of the time that I come up here, we need a citizens committee, and in this case, it would include those people who have these big events and small events, so they can give their input, because it's not fair that the, you know, Allison pays 250, and the big ones pay 250, it's gotta, it's gotta be different. Also, when you consider all this stuff, I think you should be very specific about what is a city venue that needs to be paid for. Is Kennedy Plaza a city venue? Is the Martin Luther King Building a city venue? And if it is, how come it's having alcohol there? They're getting special permits there in a child's place, I don't get that, but anyway, that, you need to be specific about that. And then also, what about a rally, or a protest, or a picketing, or something like that? Those are usually, or they're very often spontaneous. Would you arrest people for gathering at Kennedy Plaza? Would you charge them afterwards? Do they have to apply for a permit to gather more than five people, or more than 20 people? There's an awful lot that has to be thought about here. There were a lot of smart people up here tonight, too, that brought up a lot of things that I hadn't thought about, and I think you have a lot of thinking to do before you do anything on this. It can't be done at the next city council meeting or the next one after that. Thank you very much.
Are there any other comments? Any other hands?
Okay, on to the regular calendar.
And just for, just as I mentioned, the hearing, we're gonna keep the hearing open, so if there's additional comments, you can either provide them by email ahead of time or come to the next city council meeting.
Okay, item one is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances in the city of Long Beach regarding garbage and refuse. A hearing has been held on this item already. Item two is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase miscellaneous plumbing supplies and materials on an as-needed basis from the lowest responsible bidders. And I believe we have an amendment for this item?
Yes. Sorry. The amendment for this item is where it says, three lines from the bottom, oh, A1640 dot five, hmm? Hmm? Oh, I thought he said that wrong. I thought he did that wrong. Okay. So I'm just gonna propose an amendment to this item, three lines from the bottom where it says A1640 dot 54410, municipal building supplies and materials. We're gonna amend it to say A1620 dot 54410. It's just a different code, but it's reflected, it is the municipal building supplies and materials code.
Do I have a second on this motion?
I'll second.
Boing, Councilmember Vendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any comments on this mo, on this item, as amended, the council?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Any comments from the public on this item?
Item two.
Okay, next item.
Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter to an agreement to purchase fire hydrants on an as-needed basis from the sole responsible bidder.
Okay. Are there any comments from the council on this item? No? Any comments from the public? Are you, are you coming? No? Are you, are you speaking on this item?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I couldn't tell. Sorry, I, I couldn't tell if you were coming to speak. Okay.
Okay, Roy Lester, 72, Boing. This is a familiar gripe I have, I had it in the school board all the time. When I see that there's only one bidder, it means we're not doing something right to get people to bid. I don't know, you know, there's so many things that, so many requirements, but I know, and I know we did it in the school board, there are ways to open it up, there are ways to- There are ways to advertise. You might not be obligated to do it, but you do have an obligation to the citizens to try to get more bidders. One bidder is really not a bid. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Any comments, Commissioner?
Just want to make a comment on the one bid and the one type of hydrant that we now use in the city of Long Beach. There are 650 fire hydrants in the city. We have five different types of hydrants. That requires an inventory, and the average age, by the way, on hydrants is about 70 years, and probably 75 years is the life of a hydrant. That requires keeping an inventory of stems, valves, operating nuts, caps, for several different types of hydrants. So several years ago, the city standardized on a single-lock hydrant. There may have been some disagreement about that hydrant or not that hydrant, but the advantage of the single-lock hydrant is that the body of the hydrant is actually guaranteed for 25 years. And with a lot of the salt water and the air and the flooding that we've had in the city, a lot of the existing hydrants didn't fare very well in terms of the bodies of the hydrants actually lasting. So it's the only hydrant you can get a 25-year guarantee on. And again, as we try to replace them over a period of time, and we have one single type of hydrant, it will reduce the cost to make repairs, it will reduce the cost in carrying inventory to repair those hydrants. So, well, it's not typical to have one item, something like a fire hydrant or a water meter. It is very important to try to standardize on that type of hydrant or that type of water meter, just for ease of operation and ease of maintenance.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next item, please.
Item 4 is a resolution authorizing annual allocation of community development funds for the 43rd program year.
Okay. I'm going to ask our department head.
Good evening, and thank you for considering this resolution. So the Community Development Block Grant Program, or Process, is run by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and we look at three national objectives for this program. One, to provide benefits to low- to moderate-income individuals, to prevent slums and bright, and to provide funding for projects that have particular urgency due to the welfare of the community. Just to give a little background on the need, in Long Beach, 8.3% of individuals live below the poverty level. Almost 1 in 4 children under the age of 5 live below the poverty level, so this budget seeks to mitigate some of these concerns. So just to give a little backtrack of the process, we opened the application up to the public and to get their projects and their recommendations in spring of 2017. It was followed by a review and an award decision by the Nassau County, and that came in the winter of 2017. And now, obviously, we're working on authorizing this budget. And to give a little background on some of the projects and highlight some of them, in this $330,000 budget, $15,000 would go to make a community garden at the Leroy Conners Park. That garden would produce vegetables that will then go to our senior program, that will encourage healthy eating habits, as well as save us some money there. There's $10,000 for tree planting, and that will happen in CDVG eligible census tracts. There's $70,000 for senior programming at both the Magnolia and at the MLK Center. And there's $30,000 for youth groups through youth employment training. And there's also $20,000 for nonprofit youth programming at the MLK Center and the Long Beach Latino Civic Association. And lastly, a very interesting and great program that we're introducing is $130,000 for microenterprise assistance, and that would lend money to small existing businesses to encourage economic development by hiring low-income workers. So that's a little background of the project. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have or the public may have.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Just for clarification, I apologize, I'm having trouble seeing with the light.
Sure.
Each year, do we receive less and less amount for community development funds?
That is correct. Over the past 10 years, we've seen a decline. There are many factors in there, including from the federal government. We've seen that program be decreased from that side from Congress. And additionally, the county, our process is we apply through the county, and the county weighs, and given the need across the county, they've been, you know, making their decisions. So we've been trying every year to apply for more money to increase our engagement so that we can see that trend reverse.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Not really a question, but once again, thank you for your leadership in this area. If you can just kind of just briefly share and explain to the audience a little bit more about the new program, which is the microenterprise assistance program, because I know that this could be something that they could share with their neighbors in terms of this opportunity.
Absolutely. And thank you for your leadership and bringing that to our attention. So the microenterprise loan program, we had originally applied for this last year with the idea of trying to help startups. Obviously, Long Beach has a great vibrant startup community that we're trying to develop and support. Unfortunately, this program is not going to be able to help them. It's only going to be available to existing businesses. But to give a little background, I've worked with the National Development Council and the senior leadership at the county's housing and urban development to build out this program. And essentially, what it'll do, it'll give microloans, the average size of about $25,000, to an existing business. And under those loan requirements, the first year, they'll pay 5% interest rate, follow up on no interest after that. And they'll be required to hire low-to-moderate income workers. So this is essentially going to be a pot of money that will give economic development to the city, and specifically for low-wage workers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public?
My question is actually directed to Marv, so he can answer. I just have just a couple of quick questions on the program because of the salary. Will that be a job creation? So if it's not hot, if we... If you don't supply the money next year for this position, will the city have to pick that up as a hire? Because it says administration salaries. So it's a big line, $48,000 and change.
Sure.
So those salaries are for...
So the administration salary of the program, it goes to reimburse 60% of both my salary and all the salaries that go into the program, so that, you know, the city does not incur the price of fully my salary.
Okay. And so then the social security would be as part of it as well? Okay. Has that been done in the past? Because I don't recall seeing salaries ever before.
It's always been done.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Are there any other questions on this item?
Sorry to bother you right now, but Josh Jan on 315 East Market Street. Usually, I come about the rollerblading thing, but I'm not here for that tonight. Right now, there are helicopters flying around for the last two hours. Somebody's drowning. They found somebody. The problem is, at this very moment, there are people playing volleyball right at that spot. I'm not talking about the whole area. They found a 10-year-old. It's been confirmed that they're at the hospital.
Okay. I don't mean to interrupt you. I...
I'm speaking to your moral part right now.
No, 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 I understand. And I'm sure we have a... All of our police and fire are there.
I asked them.
And I'm fairly certain that they're the experts. None of us are.
I would like to bring attention, because I did speak to them, and nobody can give an answer why they didn't move people away. It's just there's somebody right now at that spot. You see where those engines are over there? Drowning right there. And 20 feet away, everybody's clapping with their volleyball games. And it's, for a moral sense of it, I think it should be addressed.
Okay. I understand.
I can't do anything about it now. I tried.
I understand. And I think it's something that we'll all look into, but at this moment, right now, we're on a different item.
I know.
And we... Our thoughts and prayers are certainly with the family, the individuals, all of our first responders, and they are the experts in this. So if there was... If they believed that that was something that needed to be done, I'm sure they would do it.
Fudgy the well, they made everybody move 150 feet away.
Okay, okay, sir. We're going to move on with the meeting, okay? Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Okay. Let's move on to the next item.
Item 5 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the contract for the demolition and replacement of bathrooms in City Hall.
Are there any questions from the council? Any questions from the council? Nope. Any questions from the public?
I apologize for having to go. But as you know, the E8 bathroom and I have been together on this mission for over 10 years. And I had the opportunity to meet with our DPW head at a meeting the other day. And this building is just falling apart. I don't understand why we keep plugging money into it. It's literally falling apart. People in here are actually sweating. There's no air conditioning. Why do we keep throwing good money into this horrific building? That's my point. Comments? Questions? Wall comes down and the asbestos is flying out. Everybody's okay with that?
Absolutely not.
Just wanted it on the record.
I can answer. I don't think... I will say that I think I speak for everyone when I say that we're not okay. We would love to build a new City Hall. I think every one of us would love to, but the amount of funds that that would take, and particularly bonding, is not something that we're prepared to do at this time, unfortunately. But it is something that we would like to do. legislator Ford?
Well, legislator Ford is coming. Just to remind you, Liz, once we thank you for your advocacy with respect to ADA issues, I think that's critical, but also, just to remind everyone, and I think you don't need any reminder, that we still have to move forward with our search with respect to a city manager. And that's a part of leadership, gives vision. And so we're still in a situation where we've not, at this time, come forward with an overall vision. Once that happens, then we can begin to move forward with all of the various initiatives. And I think that pretty much satisfies your answer.
legislator Ford?
Thank you. Denise, 436 Ohio Avenue. Just a quick follow-up with what Liz said. I really wish that maybe you could follow, like, have the luck that the Village de Violet Park had, where they had an old, you know, rundown Village Hall, and a bank went out of business and moved, and they donated that location. So the Village Hall is now in the old Bank of America building, so at very little cost to them. So I wish you the same kind of luck in a way, that you could get something.
I think we would all like to have that.
Decent environment. But I just have to say that, in regard to this with the replacement of the bathrooms in City Hall, is this the same company that did the bathrooms on the fourth floor? Because I just was here for a meeting and got to see what they look like. And I have to say that I'm really, really impressed with the work that was done there. They're beautiful, they're ADA compliant. The work was exceptional. So I'm hoping that, I guess it's the Patriot Organization was the same group that did those bathrooms, that bathroom, and will be doing the bathrooms for the rest of City Hall?
We can...
Because you got a winner there, so... Oh.
Oh.
Is it the same?
Actually, I would love to tell you, we did the fourth-floor bathrooms internally. So with our beach maintenance staff did the bathrooms on the fourth floor.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't know that. But then, let me ask you then, if we already can do something in-house, and we know that we have proven workers, and they have a record of doing a job, a very good job, you know, to provide something for us, and I'm almost positive that they would be cheaper than if we hired an outside company to do it. We know that their union, you know...
It's my understanding that... I don't mean to interrupt you, but it's my understanding that there was a number of discussions between the beach maintenance supervisors with the DPW commissioner as to whether this was something that would, even in timelines, given the season that it would be done, and additional factors, and that it was okay. That was one of the discussions that we had when it was initially...
Yeah. Part of the reason, too, is when we do two bathroom, it takes a lot longer, because we have to do it at times when there's no other projects going on within the city. So on the fourth floor, we have just legal department and engineering department and DPW, so we could suffer a little bit. But this bathroom on the second floor is in the court system, and, you know, it creates a lot of issues. So the idea is to get a contractor, and that could stay on top of it. Unfortunately, when we opened the walls up and found asbestos and some pipes that had to be replaced, dislaid it a little bit, but it still will move along a lot quicker and get the court back up and running with their own bathrooms, where they don't have to share the bathrooms in the rest of City Hall.
Absolutely.
And then ask them to, like, take a look at the ones on the fourth floor, so they have one.
We did design it based on that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on this item? Seeing none? Next item.
Item 6 is a resolution authorizing the use of community development block grant funds to furnish the labor and materials to make the food pantry at the New Life Church of Christ ADA accessible and the transfer of funds.
It's my understanding there's an amendment to the item.
Yeah, I'd like to propose an amendment to the item. The paragraph that begins with "resolved," the first sentence should read, "Resolved by the city council of the city of Long Beach, New York, that the city manager being hereby is authorized to enter into a contract with East Coast USA Construction, 87-7788th Street, Richmond Hill, New York 11418, for the furnishing of labor and materials to make the food pantry at the New Life Church of Christ ADA accessible at a cost of $59,000."
Do I have a second?
One second.
Bowing, Councilmember Vendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions from the council on this item? Do you want to talk about it?
So this project would be done with community development block grants, which I mentioned earlier. And just to give a little bit of background on why this particular project, so 12.5% of New York households are food insecure, and of those 12.5%, only 5.9% actually get food assistance via SNAP. So we've seen throughout Long Beach, you know, big food insecurity here, and we've seen grassroots organizations and nonprofits and churches step up and really provide the services that really need to be done. And New York Church of Christ, they opened about a decade ago, and every other Saturday, or, excuse me, the first and third Saturday of every month, they're there giving out food to the entire public. And when I go there, it's always dozens of people there. So we definitely want to make sure that it's ADA accessible. Currently, right now, the entrance is not, as well as a doorway, so these ones would go to handle that.
Do you need to be a member of the church in order to access the food pantry?
No, you do not have to be a member of the church. You don't have to practice that religion. We don't... That's not a question that's asked at all. It's open to the public.
Okay. Any questions from the public?
Jay Gossner. Is this considered a public works project? Is this contractor obligated to pay prevailing wages and otherwise?
Yep.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Okay. I think we have the pastor. Do you want to... Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Heschin, I didn't see you standing there. I apologize. It's hard for me to see.
This sounds like a fabulous thing to be doing. And I know we have food pantries at St. Mary's, St. Ignatius, and several other places. And I know a lot of organizations, AARP, the Girl Scouts have food drives all the time. And I know how many people in Long Beach need this, so this is a very important thing. So I hate to be a downer, but is this something that the city should pay for? And if we do, since it's a church, and if we do, then are we going to do one in all those other places that I mentioned?
It's through the... It's not through regular city funds, it's through the community block grant funds, and that was why I specifically...
And it's through HUD as well.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, we're not paying for it, it's a grant?
It's through the, it's through the community development funds that we just, we just talked about. This was from a different, a different year's funds, if I understand correctly. And one of the reasons I asked the question as to whether you had to be a member of the church was that I am aware of the fact that there was an agreement that ensures that everybody can access it from the entire public.
Okay, I'm sorry, I must not have heard that.
But it's through, if the resolution specifically says community development block grant funds.
So it's grant, it's grant money, we're not paying for it anyway.
The federal government, for clarification, the federal government has created this, it's historic, and that's why we're celebrating our 43rd year. So the federal government, through HUD, allows for what we call, as Councilwoman Diamond has already stated, this community block grant. And through that, there's a book long thing where you can look to see how they can improve or give support to communities. And so the pantry is then here allowing, obviously, it's universal, anyone can participate. But the other key piece to this is the fact that now this particular grant, through the construction, will allow for the ADA situation. So in other words, now people will have access into the building. Because the church itself has been serving people for many years. However, as the community ages, people obviously also have the right to have access. And so now, through this particular construction, it will allow for people to have the opportunity to take part in the process, because the church serves food on a regular basis.
Thank you very much, I vote yes.
That's a good question, though, good question.
And also to follow up with Mrs. Heschman's questions, we have done other churches, we've done St. Mary's in the past. I know other churches have applied, and we've applied on their behalf this year currently. And I encourage everyone in the spring, as we apply for community development block grants, to come forth with these sort of projects that will enable our community to serve those who need it better.
Absolutely.
Well said.
Absolutely. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one quick question. ADA.
Just your name.
Michael DeLorey, Long Beach, New York. Is the entrance to City Hall ADA compliant? Because I remember one time I saw a video or a clip about, I think it was Liz Truson trying to get in, and she may be able to answer that. Is that, Liz?
No, it's not.
Okay. Can community development block grants be also used to possibly enhance the entrance here for, you know, the push button, the door opens? That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Pastor Moses.
One second.
Pastor of New Life Church of Christ, 124 West Hudson Street, Long Beach. And we thank you for considering this proposal for the New Life Church of Christ, and not really for the New Life Church of Christ, but for the community. Because it's really for the community, because we do service the community. We have been servicing this community for many years. And as a matter of fact, you know, we were one of the staples that supported this community when Sandy hit, because of all of our truckloads of food that were coming to us to be delivered, we diverted to central locations for all of Long Beach to partake in. So we've always been ready and prepared to serve this city, and we still stand prepared to serve this city. And to answer your question, if you come to the door, if you drop up in a Mercedes Benz, if you come to the door, you say you have a need, we feed you. That's how we base it. We can't determine whether you have a need because of what you, the way you look, or the what you drive, and things like that. So anyone that comes to this door, says I have a need, we meet the need. And we provide families at least three to four days worth of food, three meals, for three to four days. So we thank you for your consideration, and like I said, this will help us to do the great work that we're doing, because we do service a large amount of physically challenged individuals that would like to come in and see the things, and how the operation's going on, and to get their own belongings, and not have to have them brought out to them. So we definitely want them to feel a part of the community, and able to have that equity that brings them into the building to be serviced like everyone else. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for your service to the community.
Just wanted to bring something to everybody's attention about the ADA entrances at City Hall. We just recently had a hazard mitigation plan approved by FEMA to harden the first floor. As part of that hardening, we're going to address not only the security, but the ADA access to City Hall. I did meet with Ms. Truson last week, and legislator Ford, and we discussed some temporary means of being able to tell when there is somebody that needs access to the building outside. We're working on a short-term solution right now, but within the next year and a half to two years, when we do modify the entire first floor and harden the outside of the building from storms, all those other issues will be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments on this item? There being none, next item.
Item 7 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for credit card processing services with the sole responsible bidder.
Okay. Any comments from the council? Comments from the public? Okay. Who's going to speak?
Solomon Wasserman, 145 East Penn Street, resident of the city for 31 years. I have experience with the processing companies. Oftentimes, at least in my experience, they charge excessive amount of money. There must be alternative ways how to do it. There are companies who are substantially cheaper than this profit, for-profit organization, Chase, or some other organization. If you want, councilors of interest, I would like to help out, to find out a way to minimize the cost to the consumers who will be using the process, the credit cuts. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lester?
Roy Lester, 72 Boyd, same thing. I know there was a rebuttal on the sole bidder for the fire hydrant, saying that it's a particular type of fire hydrant. I don't know what that has to do with sole bidder. But regardless, there are hundreds, hundreds of credit card processing companies sole bidder. We're not doing something right. If we can't, out of those hundreds of companies, we can't get more than one to bid, we're either not advertising right, or we're not writing it right, or we're not putting it where people can see it. Just, I'm asking you if you can do better than that. I mean, two out of the three bids today, sole bidder. There's got to be a better way. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? There being none, next item.
Item 8 is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing on a special noise variance. This item is for publication only, a hearing will be held July 17th at 7:00 p.m. Item 9 is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance authorizing financing for cost of separation payments to or for the benefit of employees of the city, starting up, sorry, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $2.5 million, appropriating said amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $2.5 million bonds of said city to finance said appropriation. This items for publication only, a hearing will be held July 3rd at 7:00 p.m. Onto the voting. Item 1 is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding garbage and refuse. Who introduces the move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
Item 2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase miscellaneous plumbing supplies and materials on an as-needed basis from the lowest responsible bidders. Who introduces the move the adoption of this item as amended?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
Item 3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement to purchase fire hydrants on an as-needed basis from the sole responsible bidder. Who introduces the move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Councilmember Bendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
Item 4 is a resolution authorizing annual allocation of community development funds for the 43rd program year. Who introduces the move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
Item 5 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the contract for the demolition and replacement of bathrooms in City Hall. Who introduces the move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
Item 6 is a resolution authorizing the use of community development block grant funds to furnish the labor and materials to make the food pantry at the New Life Church of Christ ADA accessible and the transfer of funds. Who introduces the move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Just want to once again recognize Pastor Moses. I see also his First Lady is there, also members of the congregation. Want to just once again extend thanks on behalf of the City Council with respect to your service for the community. There are so many families, as well as their children, that really benefit from the service, so I vote yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
Item 7 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for credit card processing service with the sole responsible bidder. Who introduces the move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
Item 8 is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing on a special noise variance. Who introduces the move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
And finally, item number nine is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance authorizing financing for cost of separation payments to or for the benefit of employees of the city, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $2.5 million, appropriating said amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance not to exceed $2.5 million bonds of said city to finance said appropriation. Who introduces the move the adoption of this item?
Oh.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
The city manager's multi-personnel report has been filed by the city clerk. Who makes a motion to close the meeting?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
Why don't we just take a five-minute recess? We'll be back.
What did you just do with item nine? Can you hear me?
Excuse me? It's on for publication only. It's on only for publication, sir.
Sir, 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 sir.
And we noticed.
No, 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 no.
But I'm going to ask you to sit, I'm going to ask you to have a seat. We voted on the item.
Sir, it's on for publication, please.
Move to the seven, I don't know what that means.
Try to keep it under control, thank you.
Okay.
The president ordered a five-minute break.
We'll take a recess. Okay, we're going to get started with Good and Welfare. First up is Mindy. Mindy, you're first. What am I doing? Oh.
Hello, everybody. Hi, people behind me. Oh, my name, Mindy Doveberg. Hi, people online. I am talking about handicap parking spots, and I'm going to echo Eileen Heschman's shirt that says, "If you're not outraged, you're not paying attention." Because I have noticed that there are people in our community, and it's probably not the people behind me, that are using these handicap parking spots with their blinkers on, running into Genos, running into Five Guys, thinking that they can just run in and run out. And I just want to say that I would love to be able to do my little run-in and run-out. And even though my run-in, run-out is not like theirs, I think there needs to be an implication. So I went to the police department, and I asked, "What is the fine if somebody gets caught?" And it's only $100. I was told it was $100. So I saw a guy stop and shop, and he was waiting for his wife with his blinkers on. And I said to him, "Sir," and his Mercedes, by the way, nothing against Mercedes drivers. I said to him, "Sir, what would you think about a $100 fine?" And he just went, like that. So I've visited many different states. In some states, the first fine is $500. And I think maybe in the fiscal crisis that we're in, that the $100 fine is too miniscule, and that maybe if we raise the fine for somebody that's parked illegally, maybe, just maybe, that money will increase. You guys will see that these little people that are blinking, blinkering in those handicap spots is a lot, and it happens in the West End, it happens everywhere in the city. I'm not the only one that's noticed that something needs to be done.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I don't think anyone here would disagree that that's not acceptable, and that we would definitely look into, to the extent that it's in our ability to raise, to raise that fee.
Yeah, I just want to echo that statement. Thank you for sharing that, Mindy. First of all, I think it's also about raising awareness, okay? So there has to come a place where we, as a community, become sensitive to other people. And so, one, many of you are on social media, maybe as a city, we can send out a message that can be shared throughout the city, in terms of using social media for good, that's the purpose of it, raising awareness. We can do this for a month, just sending out messages reminding people to be sensitive to other neighbors within the community. If we're a community, then we need to include all people within the community. And so I think I'll definitely follow up with the council to see just different innovative ways in which we can get the message out. I think a lot of people, because they need, they have a need, "I need to get into Genos," you're not really thinking, you're not being sensitive to other people. And it's just really raising awareness, and also, obviously, increasing our education efforts with respect to people who have access and need access.
I agree, thank you.
Mr. Wasserman? Did you want to speak against her? Okay.
Solomon Wasserman, 145 East Penn Street. I was issued a ticket for $200 when I didn't have, I had an expired handicap ticket. I want to talk about something else. In order to have it proven, it's not for the service through the post, but I went and secretary from the administrator came over here, here is the date, stamped date, May 24th. I made a proposal, five paragraph proposal, how to improve financial state of the city. Everything is common sense. Some of them smells with millions of dollars, some might take a year to implement, but nevertheless, it's a serious proposal, practical how to do it. On the top of it, since I'm limited in the time, if you will let me, I will read it. If not, I would like to propose the second paragraph to the same one, is that to let me for the position of a deputy, or maybe even the administrator of this city, if you would consider. Provided that I will be still able to do a full-time job over here, and in my own time to conduct my business as a private enterprise. Thank you. You want to have, do you want to have a copy of my proposal?
Sure.
Probably you didn't see it.
Sure, I don't recall seeing it.
There is a confidential, confidential part of it, but you can take a look and give it back to me. Thank you.
Okay, well then, we can take a look if you. Ms. Walker?
Hello, good evening. My name is Sheila Walker. I'm at 118 West Hudson Street, right here. First, I'd like to say that the city is losing a lot of revenue, because people are parking on our blocks, right here, on the first blocks of.
You just have to speak into the microphone, it's hard for everyone to hear.
Okay, so I'm saying that the city is losing a lot of revenue. People are parking, commuters are parking on the blocks, the first blocks towards the train station, my block being one of them. Sometimes I come home, I could barely get a parking space. Sometimes I have to park blocks away where I live. People leave their cars there and they go on long trips. And when I visited the police department downstairs, they, I mean, the traffic department, they said that it's a two-week timeframe that they can park their car in any particular spot. I don't think it's fair to the residents that live there. And I was hoping that the city can think of some ways that they can deter that and gain back your revenue, because you have a big lovely parking lot here, and the people who are parking on our blocks are escaping the fees that they should be paying to commute into the city and park their cars closer. One of my recommendations is maybe possibly having some type of block badge or sticker that you put in your car and stating that that's the block that you're on. Maybe you can numerically do the blocks or somehow, showing that that's the block you belong on and you can park there, you know, for however long. However, if you're not, if you don't belong to that block, then it's a two-hour, maybe, three-hour the most, but it's not fair for the residents that we can't park on our own block, right in front of our homes. Thank you.
I think I'm just gonna... Hold on.
Just, just two comments on that. First, on the, as far as the parking garage, parking garage, the last two years has been sold out, so the garage is currently at capacity. We really can't push any more commuters into the garage, unfortunately. And as far as we've looked at residence zone parking, but to do residence zone parking would require an act of the state legislature, it's not something we can implement on our own.
Okay, so I'm having a little trouble reading this name. Brand, Brandl? Brand, sorry. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just state your, your name for the record.
Yeah, Harry Brandl, Long Beach. And first, I wanna thank Mr. Bendow and Ms. Moore for rejecting the bond last month. And basically, what I wanna, that's what I wanna talk about. Have we found out who signed the payoffs for Schneerson and the other ones? Okay, so that's basically with the neighborhood. I've been here for 40 years, okay? Instead of talking about beaches, instead of talking about what's going on, everybody is talking about the illegal payoffs, if they were illegal, but we're not hearing anything about it, just a cover-up. And just wanna say, if the payouts were illegal, then you're stealing from taxpayers. And I wanna, I wanna know who signed the payouts and legal action taken against the party of parties. And if you signed the payouts and didn't know they were illegal, I'm asking for your resignation of that party or parties for not knowing their job. All right, so I would appreciate it. Every time I come to the meeting, they tell me, "We're looking into it, we're looking into it." All right? And again, thank you, Mr. Bendow, and thank you, Ms. Moore, and I hope that you reject it, the next bond issue, until we find out where these payouts went and why. Thank you very much.
Ms. Heschen?
Eileen Heschen. We're waiting a long time for a new city manager, which makes me think that you're really looking into it very hard and working very hard on finding the best candidate, and I appreciate that. There's one thing that's in the list of, you know, what you're hoping to find in a city manager, and it says, "The person must live in the city within 90 days after getting hired." I'm assuming that's so that the person who is hired is a real member of our community, sends their kids to our schools, lives here, works here, you know, I mean, as Jack did, really. He had his family here, you know, and as most, not all, but many of the previous city managers did. Is that the reason why you have that? So that they'll be a member of the community?
You can just finish your, why don't you finish your comments?
I have three different topics, so this is...
Okay, so we'll respond at the end.
Okey-dokey. The next thing is the beach mats. I see a beach mat on Laurelton, and it goes halfway down the beach, which leads to the hottest part of the beach. And I hate to think that people who are in wheelchairs have to stop at that point with no access to the water and sit on the hottest part of the beach. You know, it's not fair. Every year, we talk about these beach mats. They can't possibly be that expensive, or even if they are, get them, and get them to where they'll do some good and get the people to the water. And then the third thing is, item number nine, the separation pay, which you have tabled, is a very important thing to talk about.
We didn't table it.
Not tabled, I'm sorry.
It was on for publication, and the hearing is being held at the next meeting.
Okay, the hearing will be held at the next meeting. You canceled one of the meetings recently because of, you know, whatever reason it was, which shows that you have the right to cancel or change any meeting. July 3rd, really? This is a very, very important thing to talk about, this separation payment. You saw, you saw how many people left when you took a five-minute break. You saw an entire group leave once you were finished with one of the items, and that happens all the time. But July 3rd, that tells me that you're trying to cover something up, because nobody's gonna be here on July 3rd, it's the night before July 4th. The separation payment, Ms. Agostisi, you had said that it could not be clawed back, but I've done some reading on that.
No, 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 that's, that's a mischaracterization of my words, Ms. Heschen.
Oh, what did you say? You said, you said you had done research on it?
Yeah, and I said, from the best of our knowledge, it only can be done with great difficulty, and the city would have to hire, at the very minimum, an accounting firm and
possible... We're always hiring extra people, but to get that money back makes sense.
You want your money, so then you're gonna have to wait for me to finish, okay?
Okay, yes.
Thank you. So as I mentioned previously, and on a number of occasions, the city would have to hire an accounting firm and probably a legal team as well to effectuate that. That's what I said, that's what I've consistently said.
Okay, after you, you know, you said you did a lot of research. I've read a lot about it, and it looks like, I was reading about a company that had overpaid all of their 4,000 employees, and they are paying it back in their weekly installments.
It's not easy.
Well, apparently, if it's done with thousands of people, it can be done. And that was $2 million.
That may be.
And we don't know how much of that $2 million was legal, how much of it was overpayment, how much of it shouldn't be paid because the separation pay had no separation connected to it. So I would like you tonight to change that July 3rd meeting to a time when somebody else can be here, because nobody's gonna show up, and it's not fair.
We already...
It is not fair to the people you serve, the taxpayers, who wanna hear about this. Thank you.
Thank you. David Garfinkel? I think it's Garfinkel, did I say, I think so. Sorry.
David Garfinkel, apologies for the handwriting. 535 West Broadway. I'd like to, I guess, repeat a lot of things I've said. Thank you, Councilman Bendow and Moore, for voting no. I guess, and also, I'd like to, I'll be less eloquently, repeat everything the, what maybe, for me said. I really don't understand any other reason to have a vote on July 3rd, unless you're trying to hide something. It's been clear, listening to meetings, you know, most trivial things about permitting and stuff, that you guys really don't run that tight a ship. And we're talking pretty big numbers here, and without any explanation or clarity around how they were arrived at or how they were owed, it's a little bit disconcerting and sad to hear corporate counsel protesting like, "Oh, it'd be really hard to sort this out." Well, no, sort it out, okay?
I've never, sir, sir, I've never said, "Don't try." As a matter of fact...
Well, no, actually, you did, no.
No, it's...
Actually, you don't say anything binary, yes or no. Everything is some weasely weird type of a thing that we can't sort out, and so, yes, you can re-help anything, I get that. And I'm real proud we paid up to get you. But in any event, I really suggest, and I think it'd be the only reasonable thing, and a failure to push this meeting out to a time when everybody had a shot at being here, is not out on vacation or whatever. It's, it's just that clear-cut. It really, it's, if you don't do that, you're just doing wrong. It's that simple.
Ms. Blanchett?
Allison Blanchett. Hi. I just wanna say again, for everyone to hear, that I actually really appreciate you being up there, Ms. Diamond. This has been a pleasant, more pleasant than usual meeting. You're much nicer than Aramo. So, I mean, you're just more pleasant to talk to. Anyways, I kinda just wanted to piggyback on a couple comments I heard about parking, 'cause I love parking, parking management and economics of parking are very sexy to me. So whether it's Mindy or it's a resident who can't find parking when they get home, these, you know, some of the solutions to curbside management or parking management isn't going to the police station. That's like a really bad, or, you know, looking at the fees and stuff, I mean, that's part of it, but what you really should be doing is taking someone like Marv, did Marv leave, Marv, Marv left? Marv and Patty Bourne, and looking at our planners and people working on economic development, because parking, part of these solutions to parking management is looking at transportation alternatives. And there's a whole lot of things that, you know, puzzle pieces that go into that. And so as transportation alternatives go, meaning trying to keep people from driving to the train station, using a bus, you know, having bus stop signs, things like that, and buses that show up, good walking networks, bicycle networks, et cetera. Well, right now, I actually had a phone conversation with Patty Bourne last week. We discussed a grant that's coming up. I offered to write this grant for free, to work with the city, as if the city would be a sponsor, because I'm already eligible to write grants, I'm already in the federal DOT system, as a director of a nonprofit. So there is a really massive TAP grant coming up. It's a transportation alternatives program, federal grant, it's a minimum 250, maximum 5 mil per project, and it just has an 80/20 split on it, so that's why we would need a sponsoring agency. Something like this TAP grant can actually help with parking. It can actually help issues, whether it's PSAs, like you were mentioning, talking about just public service announcements, those are actually free. I can send you some templates for them to get out onto our social media. I know I've sent out templates in the past to Marv and to, I think it was Jack, about some PSAs to send out for traffic safety. But these, you know, these are, parking is a, this isn't like, it's never gonna get fixed. There are solutions, and there's grant money out there. But I think that you are, you might be approaching this in a, oh, well, this is a police matter. But no, this takes a little more like all-hands-on-deck type of approach to parking management, and this ties in so nicely with planning and economic development. And I just think that maybe there just needs to be a larger conversation around parking, and I will finish that statement in a second. Partnering with community members such as myself, who are willing to put in a lot of work, and I think I've demonstrated this past year from the election, I'm willing to put in the work. It just seems like a no-brainer, and my phone is always on for all of you.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments. Mr. Gussler?
Hi, good evening again, Jay Gussler, Long Beach. I don't know, I might have missed it, but did you guys say why Mr. Taggert's not here tonight?
I did in the beginning of the meeting.
I'm sorry?
I explained why he was not here in the beginning of the meeting, that there was an unfortunate situation.
He's...
At the beach. Yes, I did explain it when the meeting started.
That highlights even more why we should have a full-time city manager. You can't have a guy who's supposed to be here at a vital meeting of the community, who is called away on a police matter. First of all, I don't know what necessarily the police commissioner has to do with that. I've been on numerous responses of that nature. Police commissioner just gets in the way. So that's no excuse from, to not be here. But again, like I say, it highlights that we need to have a full-time city manager. Where are we at with the city manager, huh? What's, what's status? Have we narrowed it down to a shortlist?
Just, you can finish your comments, and we'll answer them at the end.
Okay. I'm gonna address Mr. Agostisi's comments about what he said or didn't say, or he can try and revise history all he wants, but the camera does not lie, Mr. Agostisi. Your words have been captured forever, and they can be reviewed. So what you say they were doesn't really matter. There's a record, there's a, there's a verifiable record of what you said, and what you're saying now, what you're claiming your position is now, is very different from what you said at the outset. Last thing that I wanna talk about is, can we define reside, as in reside in the city, as in the city manager, whoever that person may be, has to reside in the city within 90 days of their hire?
Is that the...
Do we have a definition?
Okay.
I mean, is that, is that merely, merely taking a lease for an... Let me finish, I wanna qualify so you can answer me correctly. Are we talking about taking a lease in an apartment, or do we actually have to physically reside? You have to spend the night in the city. Can you be the city manager residing in the city while the rest of your family lives elsewhere? Is these, are these permissible definitions of reside? I'm done.
Okay. I can respond to both of those, two of the three comments. The first one is the city manager's search is continuing. We've, as recently as this week, met to do interviews. With regard to how we define residency, there is books and books, and Councilman Mandell and Mr., Corp. Counsel Agostisi and all the attorneys in the room can answer to this. There's case law and different legislation of how you interpret what residency is and what residents are, and how we define residency, and I'm sure it's defined in our charter and our code as well. So there isn't necessarily always a clear-cut answer, but I'm assuming that, that the legislation is very clear, and the case law will define that and will cross that bridge at that time.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Agostisi has himself applied for the city manager's position?
I'm, I'm not gonna get into that.
You're saying, you're not gonna answer whether he has applied?
I am not.
Okay, well, let's assume for the, for the purpose of this discussion, I guess.
I am not gonna engage...
You're getting legal counsel from a guy who has applied for the position?
I am not gonna engage in hypotheticals with you.
You need to get, you need to get an objective legal opinion from somebody other than the guy who's applying for it.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Lester? Sorry?
All right, Lester, 72 Boyd, just picking up where Mr. Gussler left off. Isn't residency defined statutorily by the city council, as you guys define it in the charter? The answer's yes, okay. Just in case you didn't know. All right, one of the things that I wanna bring up, and I bring up every year, is the lifeguards going later than 6 o'clock on hot days. You know, in a day like today, we should've had lifeguards on. I know, I am an expert on this. I've spent 50 years, I was head of the largest lifeguard union in New York State, and there is no reason not to have lifeguards. There are, I know there's an expense involved with it, but there are ways to do it with comp time and stuff like that, where you could give kids comp time when we don't need lifeguards, like on a rainy day, and even if you gave them a benefit, you know, two-for-one or something like that, you could have them on days that are hot. It's ridiculous not to have a force that can be manipulated so that when we need them, we have them, and stop people from drowning. Couple of things on item 8 and 9. I'm just asking you, number one, I don't understand why on item 8, you have the hearing on July 17th, and on item 9, you have it on July 3rd. Why can't you, well, you've already been asked to have that meeting not on the 3rd. If you guys decide you're gonna have it on the 3rd regardless, you, you have your reasons, no question about it. But I just don't understand why one would be on the 17th and one would be on the 3rd, and the most important one is on the 3rd. But I am asking you, on the noise ordinance, to have a little bit more information. I know we come here and we have meetings, and there are all sorts of questions, and you guys don't have the answers. Does anybody know what the decibels will be with this machine? It's a 24-hour-a-day machine that's going to be pumping sand in, but, you know, I'm just asking ahead of time, ahead of the hearing, if you could get that information to us so that people will know what they're talking about, and it's not one of those things where you're having a hearing and nobody knows what's going on. The same thing with the bond. There are a lot of questions, there was the April 3rd hearing, there were a lot of questions raised, I still don't think they went answered, and it would be nice, before we have a hearing, if we have that information. That's what I'm asking.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Judy Vining?
Hello, Judy Vining, I'm speaking for Long Beach Today. I wanna first re-invite all of you to please come sit with us once a month, or one of you, or an appointee of one of you, because there are things that we discuss that involve the city, it involves policy, and being part of the discussion is very, very different than just hearing the end result of the discussion. And it's very valuable, and until, until 2012, when obviously our world changed, from And until 2012, when obviously our world changed, from 2000 to 2012, we had, at almost every meeting, a sitting city council person. Clearly, that had to change. Lots of things had to change for a while, but you know, we're in this for the long haul now. And so we have a different acting city manager. It was our last city manager who started calling caucus meetings on Wednesday nights, so it was impossible for people to attend, but I'm asking you to please be part of the process. I want, trigger this for me tonight, is that we have two things we really need to talk about in terms of city ordinances. One is that when the County of Nassau redid their social host ordinance and added opiates into it, I took a look at ours, and yeah, we were ahead of the game. We had opiates in there. We don't have marijuana in there. So that needs to be tweaked, for sure. And the other thing is, in terms of, when we talked about in terms of hookah lounges and trying to get ahead of that curve, and I was on a pretty frightening phone call this afternoon with the Department of Health issuing a statement, or they're going to issue their report within the next few days, recommending the legalization of marijuana, and we know that the hookah shops and marijuana industry are poised to take advantage of that in a very big way. So while you can't target a specific industry, there are ordinances that other places use by putting spatial limits on that eliminate more of the problem than thing. Outrageous spatial limits, like 6,000 feet instead of 500 feet away from a school, a playground, a community center, where there are daycare centers. And in effect, you can sort of contain it a lot more. But again, this is stuff that we talk about on a monthly basis, and again, until 2012, not only did we have a council person there, but our corporation council was there as well. And so when we talked about legislation, we could talk about it. We didn't always agree, I promise you that, but it's not a bad agree. It's just about it being part of the process, and we really invite you to help us with these two ordinances, and also to come and sit with us. Thank you.
Thank you for the invitation. When I first came on to the council, I had the opportunity to sit with you, and obviously that was on Wednesday night, so has it, are you still on Wednesday nights?
We're always on Wednesday.
Yeah, and that's the challenge, because we're still here, so it's, again, as an educator, I would love to be a part of that conversation.
So here's the question, too. On, we're not there every Wednesday night, okay? On the Wednesday night, if we give you enough notice before our meetings, could that Wednesday night caucus be changed?
Well, I'd love to have, please, could you please send a group invitation to the council?
I do every night.
That would be wonderful to receive, and then we could all be there.
I think you're all on my mailing list.
I haven't received anything from you.
You're kidding.
No, that's, but I'm just saying, just in the future, it would be nice if we could have that invitation, but this is for all civic groups on Wednesday evenings. We're usually here, in light of the fact that we're currently trying to make sure that we have a city manager, a comptroller. I'm here on Monday nights now. This is just clarification, not just for you, but we're here on Monday nights as well. We've been here on Wednesday nights, so it's important. If we could get the information in advance, we'll do our best to be there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Filosavich? Greg Kalnitzky?
Pass, thank you.
Brendan Healy?
Brendan Healy, West End, Long Beach. Here representing the West End Neighbor Civic Association, and going to share a couple updates on the quality of life in the West End. First and foremost, under the leadership of Bill Tanzi, we formulated a reinstated, I should say, a committee on standards and quality of life. The purpose of that committee is to provide transparency and a forum for the residents of the West End to look at quality of life issues, one of those being the applications for new liquor licenses and changes to liquor licenses in the West End. Obviously, we're very oversaturated. We want to make sure that the residents have an opportunity to voice their concerns, and provide support of businesses as well, to provide the public advantage and convenience in the West End. We do that through a standardized process. It's taken three months to put this together. We have a program that is very similar to the community boards in New York City. We engage with the 30-day notification from the clerk's office. We reach out to the applicant, ask them to complete a questionnaire. We then interview the applicants as well, and then we provide an opinion, and that opinion could be to support, abstain, or oppose a liquor license to the state liquor authority, as well as to the city council. As a part of that, as an update for the city council, we have done a few things. The first and foremost on Minnesota's, which I presented several months back about several issues we had in terms of their license, is that, first off, Drew DeVorken and the members of Minnesota's LLC have done a fantastic job in working with the community. They've heeded our concerns. They've put together a plan in place for security, which has reduced the burden on the police department. They've also focused on reducing garbage and concerns on Minnesota Avenue. That's worked out very well. Still ways to go. We still have some stipulations we're requesting on their license, but we are making progress with them, and like to thank them for their efforts. The second is, we have received a petition for Slices and Ices, now to be called Happy's Lounge, which is a full on-premise liquor license application, which I have a petition which we will share with the city council tonight. We have not yet formed an opinion on Slices and Ices, or now known as Happy's Lounge as of yet. The other part of the report is that we have, we are proudly in support of two liquor license applications in the West End, first being Baked by the Ocean, as well as Blacksmith Brez, who both are looking for beer, wine, cider licenses, under the stipulation agreement that they will follow the rules and what they put together in their application questionnaire to us, meaning that they're not going to surpass a certain point, meaning that they're not going to, you know, engage in other activities other than what they presented on their application. So I share that with the city council, because the committee has done a lot of work in this area. Again, liquor licenses is one area that we're focusing on, but we do look at other quality of life issues as well. So I'd like to thank you again for your support. I do have that petition that we have received, and again, I provide that just for transparency, not so much that we are in support of or against this application, but something we did receive just a few months back.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We can just get copies given to all the members of the council?
Sure.
I don't think there are, there's not copies there, but we can get the copies and provide it to the members of the council. Absolutely. Mr. Deloree?
Give me a picture.
This? Sorry, I need longer.
Mike Deloree, Long Beach. I just have some potential revenue sources that you may want to look into, but, council, you may be already doing this as well, so I don't know if it's redundant, but it's about a gross receipts audit, and I'd like to hand out, what I had asked the individual who runs this is, just to give me a list of, and you each have a copy here as well, give me a list of all the municipalities that you've saved money. There are two pages there. Collectively, you may know other similar people on these boards, these councils, and other attorneys in other areas. What it is, is generally speaking, Cablevision, Altis, Verizon, they pay a municipality 1%. It's called a gross receipts tax. If you look at some of the larger amounts there, like Lindbrook over $100,000, Hempstead $150,000, these are just some things that does not cost, there's no labor cost to the city. These are consultants. You may be already doing this, so it's redundant. If you're not, I would recommend at least looking into it, and I think it's worth it. Secondly, as far as New York Avenue and West Olive Street, it seems to be an area that is problematic for a visibility when it comes to intersection and parking. I met with other people that are in the city with a traffic control, and my thoughts, and they're the experts, not me, was that vans at a higher level impede the visibility of a person intersecting with New York Avenue and Olive. Perhaps maybe limiting that space, or allowing only sedan-level cars at that corner. I challenge you all to just take a drive-by and just see for yourself, if you have the time, or you ask somebody else to do that. John Miranda, I want to wish you a happy birthday. And thank you, thank you for, thank you for what you do, John. Thank you to the building department recently. They, it's more like, you know, checking up on overgrown weeds in the area, and I just want to thank them. I think you may want to consider a noise decibel read machine if the noise at the beach becomes a little bit overbearing for some. It's an opinion-based thing, but this is a meter that, it's, we have a code in this charter that states how much the noise should be. And lastly, thank you, Mr. Healy, for all the work that you do, and Bill Tanzi with the quality of life issues in the West End. And thank you, council members, for all that you do as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Santos, DeSantis?
My name is Lorraine DeSantis. I live at 72.
You just have to speak into the microphone.
My name is Lorraine DeSantis. I live at 72 Nevada Avenue, right here in Long Beach, and I have a few residents with me as well. We live in the section between Beach Street and Park Avenue. I know everyone is aware, this is a point of contention, half, less than half, but the backyards of the Brookline residents are encroaching immensely on Nevada Avenue. I have pictures here for the council to see. These are viewed looking north, those are viewed looking south. We've got driveways, aprons, bushes, cement walls coming into Nevada Avenue. Nevada Avenue is already a narrow street. Obviously, Nevada Avenue should have been a wide street, of course, over the years, the encroachments, the driveways, the bushes, the trees, the cement walls, the gates, the cars parked in their backyards are encroaching on Nevada Avenue. The street is so narrow now, you can hardly get a garbage truck down or a fire truck. We have also inquired from the building department, do we get a new street? We are walking to the beach on South Nevada. They have a beautiful new street. It was just repaved about three weeks ago. We were told that not only are we not getting a new street, but that we're not on the list for a new street. And when we see the pattern of streets south Ohio, the streets in the middle getting paved after the south part of the street have been getting paved, we wonder why. We don't want the fact that all of these backyards that are encroaching from the town of Hempstead, from Brookline backyards into Nevada, be a prevention for us getting a new road. In addition, we have a problem with the speeding. There's a light on Trenton and Beach that is slow as anything. It makes people want to turn down Nevada, so that they can make a right, a quick right turn on Beach Street, rather than get stuck at the light at Trenton and Beach. We have a serious problem with speeding, and we also would like, and are asking for more one-way signs. When you're driving down Beach Street West, there's only one one-way sign, and it's being blocked somewhat by the street sign, and I think you have a picture of that. So we would like more one-way signs. We would like the speed bumps to be put back on Nevada. We had them prior to Hurricane Sandy. The winter before Hurricane Sandy, they were removed, they were never put back, and there is a sign on one of the pictures, you could see, we still have a sign, speed bumps. So we would like our speed bumps back. We realize that this has been going on for years, but it's getting to the point now where it's being, it's a big problem. Our street is too narrow.
Okay. I don't know if it was you who sent the email earlier.
I did.
So we've had, I know someone from the building department has been down there, I believe the commissioner has been down there to look at it, to look at the encroachment issues, to look at some of the, I don't recall if your email mentioned the speed issue, but I think all of the commissioners here, and I think that will continue to look into, I know some of it is with the town of Hempstead. It's not just simply being able to pave a street. And we'll respond to your email as soon as we have like a comprehensive understanding of the street. I know that the building commissioner was down there to just, to look into the encroachment issues, and it was just, we're just kind of putting it together and getting all of the information to see the best way forward for the city and for the residents, and potentially coordinating with the town of Hempstead to the extent that that's necessary.
We thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Both town of Hempstead and city of Long Beach to come together and try to resolve this issue. This is a copy of the document as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
This is, this is your comments that you just, that you just said?
That is the document, Nevada Avenue, that was sent to Anthony Oremo, did this forward, and Todd Winkinsky.
Okay, this is what we have, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Did you see? Ms. Triston?
I don't know where the city attorney left. Did he give a reason for leaving?
Not required to be here.
Liz Triston, West End. Just a couple of questions, and then I will let that go. If the acting city manager is acting as the police commissioner this evening, who is then acting as the city manager? There was no reading of the updates. I think people should know about the Army Corps meeting. No one has mentioned that at all this evening. There's questions, we've always asked questions. We've asked Mr. Oremo as well, to please answer them during the council meetings, so there's follow-through. What has ever happened to the committees, the recreation committee? We still don't have people on them. And what is the process for an ethics committee? Would the separation payouts come under that? Where is the comprehensive plan in the terms of any upcoming meetings? I also believe that the July 3rd meeting should be moved. Why, I sent an email, but I did not get a return regarding the June 5th meeting that was canceled without any, from what I understand, any proper notification. And my final two thoughts regarding sidewalk clutter, especially in the West End, and also now more prominent in the East End, there needs to be four foot of clearance. And I know that Judy and I have discussed these sandwich signs. According to the charter, they're not allowed, but they're everywhere, so either every business needs to get rid of them, or everyone needs to pay that fine. And if there is a fine, what is that fine? How much is it? And my final thing is, again, just because of the city hall building, with the windows being open currently as they are, they're an extreme safety hazard, so anyone leaning on them, one day is just going to fall out. So that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you. So are any answers to my questions?
I'm going to go through, through some of them.
Thank you.
With regard to the comprehensive plan, I think that the council has discussed at some point, we've now passed the budget, of moving forward with potentially the final hearing. At this time, there are no additional meetings scheduled. The July 3rd meeting, you requested that it be moved, a number of individuals have. I think we can discuss as a council the feasibility of doing that, and the impact that it actually has on our budget, since the funds that are being bonded for were contemplated when we were passing the budget. The city manager, I think it was an unforeseen emergency. He had planned to be here. I had spoken to him just before. I can tell you that the, I'm just, I'm gonna, I'm just going through all your questions. The intent was for him to be here. Unfortunately, there was a horrible incident that occurred- Unfortunately, there was a horrible incident that occurred that prevented him from being here. It also prevented us from really having his update given by another individual, since it was really rather last minute. I think that it happened within an hour of the council meeting starting and didn't allow us really to have that prep time. With regard to sidewalk clutter, I think we should speak with the city manager after the meeting. And to the extent that there's an issue, we'll continue to work, to work on it. If it's a code enforcement issue, we can, we can deal with it that way. If it's a fine issue, I don't have the answer to that question specifically, but we'll definitely look into it. I have it written down. And I don't know the amount of the fine offhand. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I think that I answered all of the questions. Okay. Ms. O'Leary?
Kathleen O'Leary, Long Beach. One quick solution to the parking problem that could happen next week. I think it's overly liberal to allow someone to stay in the same space for two weeks. I'm sure there was a rationale for it 30 years ago. I don't know what it was, but I'm in the East End, and we have problems with houses having eight cars to one house, and people going on vacation and just leaving their car for three weeks in front of one house. And I'm sure where this other woman was talking about, it's terrible. So, I would suggest, like, lowering the two-week limit down to one week. I think that should be sufficient for anyone who's sick or goes on a short vacation. But two weeks is really too little, because it takes you, like, three days to figure out that the same car has been there. You know, it's just too liberal for me. I was going to talk about the money in the reserve fund, which should be around $6 million now, being used to pay down the $4 million a year we're paying in interest. But I see that we're right back to where we were, borrowing money for next budget. You know, we, we're here for two five-hour meetings, shooting down a $2.1 million proposition. Now, we're borrowing $2.5 million. It just seems like a knee-jerk reaction. I know towns have a lot of problems with this issue, particularly Bald, when I'm aware of. But why not consider taking money out of this reserve fund instead of borrowing and just digging ourselves in deeper? I just, I just can't believe it. It's like deja vu. Like, we're sitting here for 10 hours discussing how we didn't want to borrow money, and now we defeated it for this year, and then it's right back in front of us. It doesn't make any sense. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fiore?
Tina Fiore, Long Beach. Just first of all, what's the process when you hand in paperwork for good and welfare and you sign up?
I was just handed a staff.
Should they not be handled in the order that they were submitted?
I don't, I don't know. They were just here.
Okay. And just for future, I think my opinion is, and you can choose to do what you want, but if you make an effort to be here early, to sign up, so that you can address what you need to address in the early part of good and welfare, then it should be addressed in that matter. Okay. John Miranda, happy birthday.
Thank you.
And I want to torch you. Do we have any idea when the other half of the boat launch is going to be put in? The ramp on the boat launch, there's only one side is in.
It's going to stay in position, yes.
Okay. Well, that's what I'm asking is, do we have any idea?
No idea, because we...
Okay. Oh, we haven't gotten up, we haven't gotten up far yet.
No, we have to get several prices.
Right.
It's over $6,000,000. So, required to get three prices. We're processing 20, get the third price, get the third price. We put the first order in possession before the policy.
Okay.
And then we get the first order going to get the 10.
Gotcha. Thank you. Now, just on that note, there was a recreation superintendent, not superintendent, a recreation supervisor who was down by the boat ramp over the weekend. And I don't know if he was there to supervise on the skateboard ramp, but he was trying to supervise on the boat ramp. I don't know if it's any, that one had anything to do with the other. But there was a tremendous backup, and that's why I say that of getting people in and out. On top of which, there were also somebody who was offloading their boat on boat occasions where their children are swimming at the bottom of the boat ramp. So, I don't know what the signage is on the...
It's a recreation.
Issue, okay. So, somebody should address the recreation department, make sure we have proper signage on the, on this, on this, you know, the street side, that nobody should be swimming at the bottom of the launch. That's number one. Number, excuse me, number two. All things considered, with what happened today, and this is a very tragic day once again. It's to start off the summer, and we haven't even begun. I know we have two pieces of boat equipment, a new fire department boat and a new police department boat. Love to hear if they were utilized today, if there were, there was any help in this recovery. But I don't believe, I'm not sure either boat is even in the water. So, I think we should look at the fact that we purchased equipment, whether via grants or not, that we have the manpower to man them in these situations. If the beaches aren't open, I'm sure we had a few lifeguards out there, should be looked at. Again, this is not an attack. It's just to bring awareness to... I have, on more than one occasion this week, have seen the jetties as early as, as much, as late as 6:30 before I left for this meeting today, of people on the jetties. And I don't know what our plan is. We talked about people patrolling, whether it's the blue shirts patrolling on ATVs or lifeguards. It really is not the lifeguards or auxiliary police, but somebody should be patrolling. We are headed for a giant disaster as it pertains to our jetties with people on them. Every night this week, whether you look out the window, walking or not, there are tons of people up and down that are on those jetties. And we are, we're just asking for it. And I appreciate the signs. They don't read them. The last thing would be also, again, I think, I think there's, you all, we elected all of you into office, and there's, we deserve the right to have a city manager and a city comptroller in place. Enough is enough. It's over seven months long, and you're not being very forthcoming with the residents. You're going to make us foil paperwork to find out who's applied and who's interviewed and who's not. I think you should be a little bit more open with the people that are sitting in this room and the residents of the city of Long Beach. They earn that right. They've earned that.
Thank you. Mr. Verona?
Edward Verona. As I brought up in the last meeting, this city has a problem with transparency and accountability. What? I'm sorry. The idea that we should have a bond hearing on July 3rd is ridiculous. This council knows many people go on vacation around this time, and many would not want to attend a board, a bond hearing on their, beginning of their 4th of July holiday. This is why I ask the council to change the hearing until the next meeting. Before this hearing, a full list should be released of everyone receiving a payment, and it should be double and triple-checked for accuracy. This would be the first of many steps to repair the breach in trust between the city and its residents. Accountability is important, and this council needs to do just that. Thank you.
Everybody have a good night. Get home safely. That's it.